Hello, everyone. Welcome to the October 5th Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Can we have the report regarding posting of agenda?
Agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, September 28th, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thanks. Can everybody please stand and follow me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the front line, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the approval of the minutes?
I move approval of the minutes from September 21st, 2011.
I have to abstain. I was not present for the last meeting on September 21st.
I have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Can I second that?
You could pass the gavel in second.
Okay. Second.
It's approved.
It's approved.
All right, great. All right. So, we don't have any oral communications cards. Zoning appeals, we don't, we have none. Planning Commission item, first one is New Business A, Statutory Development Agreement to Implement the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee Early Payment Option. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Chairman Pro Tem, Commissioners, I'd like to turn the meeting over at this point to Ms. Gillian Van Miden for a brief announcement from the Legal Department regarding development agreements in general.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. I just wanted to update you with respect to this particular development agreement concerning Verdugo Gardens. Am I on? Okay. And this, these comments will also apply to the other development agreements. So, we, since they were published, we were looking over the table of contents. So, we just wanted to let you know that we made some minor updates. We had to update the table of contents to accurately reflect where the sections were appearing in the document itself. Some section references needed to be corrected. And one provision had been dropped out of the body of the agreement, which was placed back into the body of the agreement. It's called a force majeure or an enforced delay provision. And that's typically where circumstances beyond the control of the parties occur that might cause their inability to act, would force the agreement to be delayed for that period of time that they are unable to act. And those things are listed. So, there was agreement on the part of the parties that that should be inserted. It was referred to. And in updating the table of contents, we learned that in two of these, it had somehow dropped out. So, essentially, just housekeeping matters that we wanted to let you know. So, that will apply to the Verdugo Gardens VA as well as to the Nordstrom and the Triangle. So, all three, we just updated essentially the table of contents and found some incorrect section references. If you would like an update again concerning the nature of development agreements generally, I'm more than happy to provide that information. But I know that the Commission has been through this exercise previously for the Crown Realty Project two weeks ago. So, I'm happy to provide that if that's your wish.
I think it may be a good idea because I think we didn't have two Commissioners present at that time.
Very good. As Vilius Ametitis has indicated, these development agreements are for the purpose of locking in the full development impact fee payment at the fees in effect until the end of the year. That's December 31st, 2011. What these applicants will need to do is to submit their, to plan check, a minimum foundation-only plans prior to the end of the year, and make that payment. Under the current development agreement ordinance, we allow for 50% of that development impact fee payment to be made on building permit issuance and then at the end at certificate of completion. Here, because the increase is fairly significant, which is doubling of the fees after the first of the year, the city likes the advantage of having that, all of that fee payment being made upfront, which provides an incentive to the developer to complete the project because these agreements lock in the fee without a opportunity to request for a refund, rebate, or credit against future changes to the project. So, that provides the incentive to complete that project, which is another benefit to the city in that the project will be completed, the assessed value of those properties will be increased. Some of these are mixed-use projects, which will provide not only population but sales tax revenue to the city. So, that is the general quid pro quo for what these agreements are about. The intent is not to use them for the standard function, which is to lock in zoning and other types of regulations over an extended period of time where you have a risk or fear that some of those changes might occur before you vest. That is upon receipt of a building permit after the full plan check is completed that might affect your project and force you to make additional changes and incur additional expense. So, that component of it is not being included. So, again, focus specifically on the development, early payment and of the development impact fee upon the submission to plan check of a minimum foundation-only plans. So, if you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman Pro Tem. That sounds good, by the way. Ms. Van Miden, the modification or the addition of the force majeure clause that you mentioned for this, does that also apply to December 31st date?
No, it does not. That is a specific exception to the prepayment, the required payment and prepayment and the submission to the foundation only, it does not apply to that, nor does the inability to obtain financing for the project.
Very good. Thank you.
We have another question?
No, that was my question.
Okay. Is anybody else? Okay. I guess we can go on to the first staff report.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Pro Tem, Planning Commissioners. Again, not to repeat everything that Ms. Van Miden mentioned, but this is solely for the development agreement in order to go ahead and implement the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee Early Payment Option. This is, this is in particular for the Verdugo Gardens project located at 610 through 626 North Central Avenue. The one-and-a-half-acre project site is located in the downtown specific plan, Gateway District, is bordered on the west by Central Avenue, on the north by Sanchez, and on the south by Doran, directly adjacent to the 134 freeway. Currently, there is a project proposed, six stories, 220 residential units. It's fully residential. There is no commercial or mixed-use component. In addition to the six stories of residential, you have two levels of parking with a total of 298 parking spaces. There are additional amenities provided onsite, pool, public open plaza areas, barbecue areas, whatnot. They do also provide additional open space on the ground floor in the form of an open plaza on the corner of Sanchez and Central Avenue. According to this early fee payment option, the project would be paying approximately $7,666,000 worth in the early payment fees. Again, this would be in combination with the early submittal of the foundation-only permit. There, this project has not been reviewed yet by City Council. The Stage One and Stage Two combined Design Review Board's submittal will be reviewed by City Council, scheduled for November 15th, 2011, next month. In addition to the design review, your recommendation on the development agreement will be forwarded to City Council as well as an addendum that was prepared in regards to the project's impacts. They provided, they prepared an addendum in this case because there was an original project on the, on the site, which was the original Verdugo Gardens project, which was a 24-story, 200 and, forgive me, I don't want to misquote, but approximately 300-unit development. It was a mixed-use with ground floor, commercial. At that point in time, and this was back in June 2008, they had a final environmental impact report that was certified for this particular project. Obviously, the six-story, 220 unit is a downgrade from the original project, and there were no additional environmental impacts. So, addendum was prepared, and it will be also submitted to City Council for review. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. And again, we will be forwarding your recommendation solely regarding the development agreement to City Council for their final decision.
Have any questions?
I don't know. I'm ready to move the item.
I have one question. It's more general, but we talk about the open space relative to these projects, and a lot of times they're using.
I think we have to stick to the fees, which is.
Not the project.
Yeah. Any other questions we have to ask outside of this specific item?
Just fees.
Yeah, we have, our discussion should be limited just to the fees.
Not a problem.
And also the development agreement, but not the project.
Right.
Yeah, it wasn't, and it was more general. It wasn't about the project. I just need, lack understanding about one portion of the project.
Sure.
On all three cases.
If it's something.
If it's a general question, we'd be happy to answer that.
Oh, I wanted to ask, we're finding a lot of these, you have the open spaces included at the front adjacent to the street. And I just wondered, do we have any standards on that, that they should include something and have a certain.
Yes, the downtown specific plan actually is very specific about how much open space they're supposed to have, how much of it needs to be accessible to the public from the adjacent to the street, and how much of it could be private.
Okay.
And all of these projects, by the way.
But since it's open space, nothing about having benches or having any features like that in this case?
No, no.
Thank you.
And so.
No, I have no questions.
Okay. And so, just to house, this is the Resolution Number 2011-04, right?
Correct. The Resolution 2011-04.
So, I move the recommendation of Resolution 2011-04, the Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Glendale recommending approval of the development agreement in connection with the Verdugo Gardens project located at 610 North Central Avenue, Glendale, California.
I have a motion by Planning Commissioner Astorian. Is there a second?
I second. I do have a question.
Yes.
Does it need to be as amended?
With the language as amended today by Ms. Van Miden.
May I ask?
As, as amended.
Thank you. And resecond.
And I have a second by Commissioner Landergan in terms of roll call. Our Commissioner Astorian?
Yes.
Commissioner Landergan?
Yes.
Commissioner, I was going to say Commissioner Lee, but.
Sheets.
Sheets, thank you very much. And then Chair Pro Tem, Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, 4-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item is Item Number B, Statutory Development Agreement to Implement the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee Early Payment Option. For File Case Number Americana at Brand Expansion. Do we have a staff report on that?
Sure. Good evening, Planning Commission members. As you mentioned, this item is a statutory development agreement for implementation of the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee Early Payment Option for the Americana Brand Expansion located at 230 South Orange Street and 123 West Colorado, West Colorado Street. As you might recall, the expansion of the Americana brand is the construction of a new Nordstrom store. The expansion would add approximately 122,000 square feet of retail space to the Americana in a new three-story building, and the site is approximately 1.1 acres. South Orange Street will be vacated, and this area will be, become part of the building as well as a, as a patio. The project is scheduled, is scheduled for the Redevelopment Agency Council Meeting of October 25th for design review approval. State statute requires a planning commission to review the development agreement for consistency with the general plan, and in this case, the Town Center specific plans, as this is in the Town Center specific plan area. Staff believes that this development agreement is consistent with the general plan as discussed in the staff report. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission to recommend to the City Council to approve the proposed development agreement for the Americana brand expansion.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Ms. Landergan?
My question is, is that right now, this project has requested some reduced concessions. Is the actual fee based upon a square footage or is it based upon other elements so that if it's not approved, this reduced fee, will they pay the other portion at the increased rate or is? So, this would assume it only for the square footage that's proposed here because this is the agreement. So, that if they change that square footage or that concession for parking is not made and the square footage? I'm just saying.
I think you may be referring to the Triangle project. I think you may be referring to the next project.
I'm looking at the wrong project?
The Triangle.
Generally speaking, all of these might have that same concern.
The Triangle project has a parking exception associated with it. The Americana.
It did have a parking exception. It won't anymore.
Actually, let's, yeah, let's return. We can update on that. The Americana at Brand proposal does not, is, there isn't a parking exception requested with that proposal.
But this square footage, if there's any increase in the square footage or a change in the footprint, any of that increase would be charged at the double rate that was not paid for here. So, any exceptions, it's only dealing with what is going to be presented by the 31st.
That's correct. If there's an increase in the square footage or modification to the plan thereafter, it would be subject to the new rate. And that's specified within the development agreement, Section 4. Okay.
Do we have any other questions?
I'll be happy to move it. If I can find it. The cover online. Apologize.
All right. Want to do it?
Sure. I'll move that Resolution Number 2011-05. Am I in the right one? I think, yeah. I'm not sure how far I need to go on this. I didn't. The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Glendale recommending approval of a development agreement in connection with the Americana brand expansion located at 230 South Orange Street and 123 West Colorado Street in Glendale.
That would be as amended.
As amended.
Due to my earlier comments.
Second.
Great. Do we have a roll call? Do we have a motion on table?
This will be a roll call, Mr. Sheets?
All right.
Mr. Astorian?
Yes.
Ms. Landergan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda is Item Number C, Statutory Development Agreement to Implement the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee Early Payment Option. This is for the Glendale Triangle project. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Good evening again. The next item is the Statutory Development Agreement for the impact fee for the, what we call the Glendale Triangle project located at 3900 San Fernando Road. The project is the construction of a mixed-use development with retail, medical offices, and our live-work units on the ground floor and 20, I'm sorry, 229 residential units on the floors above. The 2.18-acre site is bounded by San Fernando Road to the west, Central Avenue to the north, I'm sorry, Central Avenue to the east, and Las Vegas to the north. The project is scheduled for the Redevelopment Agency Council Meeting on October 25th for Stage Two Design Review Approval to reflect minor modifications to the original design. And that's what I believe Ms. Landergan was referring to just a few minutes ago. No, revisions. Revisions. The revisions include incorporating some affordable housing, I think it's low-income or very low-income housing into the residential mix. And so, there.
It's a bonus element.
Yeah. The previous project requested a parking exception because the, of the affordability component in this project, they will not need a parking exception. So, that's.
If I might interject, I apologize to Mr. Kiesel. I was on the phone this afternoon with the developer as we were going through some of these updates and corrections and confirming the table of contents and other modifications that I had indicated. And my understanding at this point is that they will be requesting a parking exception for the commercial component. They had previously had an 82-space exception for the commercial component. And it's my current understanding, I'm looking at the redevelopment manager, that they will also be bringing that exception forward. They are also modifying the project to incorporate a very low-income and affordable component under SB 1818 and the city's density ordinance, ordinance as well, which allows them to have parking concessions as well as other incentives and concessions. But they're only seeking that to apply a exception, I'm sorry, a concession for purposes of parking related to the housing component of the project. So, just a minor update.
I apologize for that mix-up. Sorry. All right. As I said in the previous application, state statute requires the Planning Commission to review development, the development agreement for consistency with the general plan. And staff does believe that the development agreement is consistent with the general plan. And actually, we put the revised development agreement on your desks right before the meeting. Gillian, her presentation at the beginning of the meeting said there were some minor changes to it, including the table of contents. What you got before you related to the Triangle project includes those changes already. So.
This, excuse me, this development agreement also includes a couple of other minor changes I've drawn to your attention, and this came at the request of the developer. And this arises out of the environmental analysis that's done for the project. There's a sewer mitigation fee amount that we are aware of, and they asked that amount be inserted into the development agreement. We did so, is, in that we know what that amount is and that the information concerning the parking exception also be included, as I've indicated.
Staff is recommending the Planning Commission to recommend to the City Council approval of the development agreement for the Triangle project.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Yeah. At the risk of asking a question out of place again, because I was going to talk about the parking, looks like I don't need to. I have, I'm confused. I see here it's, and is stated by staff, this project is recommended by the staff.
The development agreement.
Development agreement.
Yes, yes.
Yes. But I read on this document that's attached to this, it says.
Which document?
Oh, there's a, it's from Bass and Stewart and Associates, Civil and Environmental Engineers, talking about the City of Glendale is requiring the developer of the Glendale Triangle property to install a vapor barrier under the property. So, well, there's no mention of that in the recommendation. So, does that mean it may be an issue? It may change the project?
That is not part of the development agreement that's part of you. However, it will be reviewed as part of the project approval by the City Council. Agency will be the final approval authority on the Stage Two Design and the entitlements associated with the project and the environmental document that has been prepared.
Okay. And if I'm going too far, then let me know. But isn't it possible that this could change the scope and size and footprint of the project?
That component of, that was a mitigation measure on the original project. It recommended, and it's been determined based on the revised project that a, the vapor barrier referred to is not required because of the nature of the construction of this, of subterranean garage, the proximity of the superfund site, the water table, and a number of factors. So, we, we had the experts, we examined that within the context of the addendum to the project to see whether or not that vapor barrier mitigation measure was required or a substitute for it was appropriate. And it was determined by the experts that a substitute for that mitigation measure was appropriate. So, we did look at it internally, and we did as well have the consultants come in, the consultants that prepared the EIR, as well as those that look at the hazardous materials component of it.
My last question then would be.
It won't change the, the size of the project upon which the fee is being calculated or the, yeah, any other component of the project outside of what is proposed that would be subject to this development agreement.
Okay. So, then in that process, was the first consultant in the discussion relative to whether it was valid or not?
Yes.
The date on this is September 20.
13.
13.
Because we had Brian and Stewart, and then I noticed in the, further into the memo, it was another group, I think.
By the way, I don't have that attachment to the.
Is this not part of this? I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't have it. So, I don't, do you show that in your packet?
That's why I wanted him to read it.
We, we met with Impact Sciences and had that consultant on the phone subsequent to that letter to discuss that issue because it was of concern to us with regard to the revised project and the application of that particular mitigation measure.
All right. I'll just, I'll finish it with saying this. What troubles me, and the experts are a lot smarter than I am, if you consider value of the area we're in, Glendale and Burbank and the Louvial configuration, we're coming from the Verdugos and, and the San Gabriels, and then the industry we were in that caused all of this, or a lot of it, I just, I'm concerned. It would bother me or worry me. I just want to make sure we're taking the right steps to make everybody safe. So, that's why I brought up the issue.
Then, we will, we will make sure that that comment that the, at least one Commissioner has expressed concern in relation to this letter, we will make sure that that is covered in our staff report to the City Council before their final approval. And with regard to other Commissioners not having seen the letter, we'll double-check. We, we have the same packet for everyone, but if you don't have a copy of this, we'll make sure to have, to make sure you have it.
I don't think I got it either.
I didn't either. That's fine. I asked him to bring it up.
But we always, we always knew Hank was special.
Engineer. So.
Yeah, special. The engineer. Our apologies. May I, may I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That document was the last sheet as part of Exhibit Three of the environmental addendum.
So, it was.
So, it wasn't a separate attachment. It was actually an attachment to the addendum, which was Exhibit Three.
I made it a separate attachment. Unintentionally.
The question, maybe clarification, that I think would bode well is, with the 82 parking exception, I think it, it will serve us all well to explain one of the reasons for that is because it's next to a transportation hub, because it is a TDM and so forth. So, I would appreciate it if you can. We have, the folks at large listening to this 82 parking exception comes across as a whole lot, so. Right. And as it is, the project is providing a lot of parking to begin with, and the 82 parking exceptions is in relation not only to being along the lines of several regional transit areas and close to our, the city's own transit center on San Fernando and Cerritos, and all, as well as the shared parking analysis that the consultant has provided and the city has accepted, that there's a, there's a reduction in parking requirements based on the shared parking use. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any other questions? Okay. We get a motion?
I move that Resolution Number, there it is.
2011-03.
2011-03. Thank you, Mr. Kiesel. Recommending approval of a development agreement in connection with the Glendale Triangle project located at 3900 San Fernando Road, Glendale, California, be sent to the City Council for approval.
As amended?
As amended.
I second.
Great. We get a roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I stand corrected. Director Higani, we do have the attachment that Commissioner Sheets was referring to. It's, it is attached to our environment.
Planning Division updates?
Yeah, we have two updates. Right now, we're wrapping up the North Glendale Community Plan, and we're gearing up for Right now, we're wrapping up the North Glendale Community Plan, and we're gearing up for the next two community plans that we'll be working on. And at this time, we're basically looking at our public outreach programs and how we're going to put those together. Last time with North Glendale Community Plan Advisory Committee, we did have members of the planning commission, so we just wanted to give you a heads-up that probably starting in December and January, we'll be putting together the next two community plan advisory committees, and we'll be asking for representatives on the planning commission to participate in those. And the areas we're looking right now are the Canyons area, and then also East Glendale. And then, accompanying that, we have the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. They're proceeding with putting together a transportation advisory committee related to that document, and they will be asking for members of the planning commission to also participate in their effort with that. I know you have a joint meeting that's going to be scheduled with the TPC on Monday, October 24th, and so that's likely to come up as a topic, so I just wanted to clue you in on that and let you think about that a while. If you haven't reviewed that plan, you might want to take a look at it, because there is an effort going on right now to start implementing it. And just as a reminder, our next meeting is a special meeting of the planning commission to discuss the North Glendale Community Plan. That's Monday, on the 17th of October. It will be in this room, starting at 5:30. And we have sent out email notice and email blast to everybody who's given us either a comment or indicated an interest in that project, although we aren't doing a full mailing. It was continued to a date certain, however, with email, we know that there's a, a lot of people that were interested, so we did communicate with that group.
That meeting starts at 5:30 or 5?
That meeting starts at 5:30 on October 17th.
Here at the planning--
That's here in the planning, yes. And then the Joint TPC Planning Commission meeting is the following Monday, October 24th. That's at 6:00 PM in the council chambers.
What exactly are we going to be talking about on the 24th?
The 24th is discussion of the South Brand Plan.
Okay. So, that's the one, so we have one agenda item for the 24th?
Right. There may also be a discussion of the--
Safety.
--Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. The agenda hasn't been finalized yet, but that issue might also be addendized.
Great.
If I could provide some information as well under the staff comments section, and it is relative to the, just general information to draw the commissioners' attention to and to address Commissioner Sheets' concern relative to the Triangle project. If the commission wants to take a look at, at their leisure at Section 3.03 of the addendum, that addresses the hazardous, hazards and hazards materials section, and specifically notes that there is a project design feature that was imposed on the project to substitute for that mitigation measure, to take care of the concerns that you faced. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I guess I'll make a comment, because I have a final comment, if I may.
Okay.
Protemp Chair, sir.
Well, I guess we're going to comments from commissioners?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to ask a question of staff concerning the development, the agreements that we have been looking at outside of that. And the question is, is, we are reviewing these because of direction by the city council, am I correct? That this is a good incentive? With these agreements, and the, these are not full plans that are being submitted, this is an atypical submission that we're asking for. So, other, in other words, what I'm asking is, other new ordinances that may be coming in, such as the Green Glendale Building Ordinances, are not superseded by having this permit come into place, correct?
No, they are not. All other, all other rules, regulations, ordinances, provisions of the zoning code are applicable, and they're specifically called out as, as being amended from time to time, so they are not frozen in time in any way, shape, or form. So, any other fees that are required to be paid, any other changes to zoning regulations and other regulations are applicable to these projects.
Thank you. That not being frozen in time was the question, the answer to the question I was looking for, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, Protemp, I must say that our new legal counsel to the planning commission was whispering to me how impressed they are by the thoughtfulness and the diligence of the planning commission, which was no news to us. We wanted to tell you how much we appreciate the level of engagement that you have in the material that comes before you. We can count on the planning commission to always have a very nice, in-depth debate. And our legal counsel was impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments? Yeah.
About the bike safety and accidents that have occurred, and maybe some committee or something happening--
Sure.
--that I think it's important.
Well, I think it's, touches on what Ms. Stotler was talking about earlier.
Safe streets.
And it's, the committee that is under discussion by the Transportation and Parking Commission right now, is the committee that was proposed in the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, which is a pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee. And I think you may have seen the article--
I did.
--on the, yeah, on the news press, and I think the way they made it sound like was that these, that's happened in Pasadena, which were two cyclists who got hit and killed, and then because of that, residents were pushing for it. But it's, it was really under the agenda before that.
Very good.
And it's, it's following, I guess, through what the plan is, and it's going to be under discussion too, soon as well.
That's correct. That would be an item that's under the Transportation and Parking Commission, and right now, they're looking at putting together the committee, and they, they're going to be asking that there be members from various city commissions, including the planning commission.
Great, great.
I think there's also two Bike Master Plan meetings this month, and I got an email just a couple days ago, so it might be good for you guys to know. I think the first, I don't really, I, one of them is on, on October 13th, it's at 6:00 PM, and the other one is on October 20th, it's at 6:00 PM as well, and--
It is--
--to let you guys know, and maybe if you have an email of that, or I can forward it, and we can forward it to the rest of the commission, so they're aware.
Would the context of these two meetings be the same? Is it only because so everybody has access--
There, I believe they're located in different parts of the city.
But the context, what discussion is going to be the same topics, right?
Yes, it's the Bike Master Plan, outreach meetings for the--
So, it's not one or two, 101 and 102 is--
No, no, as far as I know.
You might want to only go to the closest one.
Yeah. So, I don't have the rest of the details, but maybe we can, we can get that for the--
We're asking all commissioners to bike to these meetings.
In your suit.
And future planning commission meetings, is that chance?
Do Harleys count?
Not a bad idea.
And what time is that, Mr.--
I think it's, it's at 6:00 PM, both meetings. And actually, I do have an address. The 13th is going to be at the Civic Center, at Room 106. Is that, is that the main?
Room 106.
Okay, so that's Room 106. And the 20th is going to be at the Spar Heights Community Center, 1613 Glenco Way. Do we have anything else?
I move the way.
All right.
Adjourned.
Great, thank you.